Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call you to order to the November 10th, 2020 Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Person to the Governor's Stay-at-Home-Stay-Safe Order, this council will be conducting the meeting via Zoom this evening. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any proposed amendments to the published agenda?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I would like to move to remove Agenda Item E from this evening's agenda and schedule it for our next council meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just want to say that we just got this inter-local agreement, and I've had several questions come to my mind on it, and neither the mayor or the chief are available this evening, and I would like an opportunity to discuss it with them before I render a vote. So that's why I'm hoping we can just move it on to our next council meeting.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of moving Business Item E to our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
It's a consent agenda item, correct?
No.
No. Okay. It's the business item.
It's beside me.
Thank you.
And any nays? Motion carries, and we've moved Business Item E. And we have to approve the agenda then?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. One in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our first public comment period. This public comment period is lifted, is limited to items on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, people making comments need to be respectful, no inappropriate language, and no personal attacks. There's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. And since we're on Zoom, please state your name for the record. Is there anybody at this time? Yes, Ms. Kim. You're on mute.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you all very much for all of your hard work for getting this on the agenda. We have 167 homeowners who are incredibly thankful for your entertaining Landis Court to be a public road. We have no idea what we would have done had you not done this for us. I can't even express how grateful we are. This has been a two-year fight by myself, and I think that, irrespective of where it went wrong, the fact that you're all willing to right a wrong is a good thing. And amidst our country in such turmoil, anyone doing a good thing is a breath of fresh air. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on something that's on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Protem, you might just remind others that they would have to unmute themselves for us to be able to hear them.
Thank you for that reminder. Is there anybody else that would like to unmute themselves and make a comment?
Well, I just wanted to, so was Chief Fawcett on when?
No.
Is he, item's been removed?
Right, I was gonna let him know that.
Okay.
Chief Fawcett.
Fawcett.
Just want to let you know that the item before the council for the approval of the contract was removed from tonight's meeting. Couple of council members have some questions, and it'll be moved to the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming on. You're more than welcome to stay.
I will. Thank you.
Do we have any proposed amendments to the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lawson and a second from Councilmember Lucarelli. Any discussion? All in favor, motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any nays? The agenda passes. I believe we have no presentations for tonight, and we have no public hearings. So the first business item, let me get to that, is on adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Carrion Drilling for the 2020-2021 Well 11 Modification and Testing and Decommissioning Wells 1 and 2 and Documenting Procedure Procurement Procedures. And this is Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. On September 22nd and September 29th, 2020, the city's Public Works Department advertised in the Kitsap Sun on the city's webpage and in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and we uploaded to the bid documents to the Washington Builders Exchange. By the amended October 16th, 2020 bid opening due date of 1:00 p.m., the city received and opened two sealed bids for the 2020-2021 Well 11 Modification and Testing and Decommissioning of Wells 1 and 2. In general summary, the sealed bids received, including tax range from an apparent low of $98,200 to an apparent high of $119,600 with the engineer's estimate at $100,000. Upon review and staff following the completion of the mandatory bidder responsibility checklist, it was determined that Sharon Drilling, Inc. provided the low responsible bid proposal of $98,200 for the 2020-2021 Well 11 Modification and Testing Decommissioning of Wells 1 and 2, which are at McCormick. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 040-20, thereby approving contract number C074-20 with Sharon Drilling, Inc. Excuse me, in the amount of $98,200 for the 2020-2021 Well 11 Modification and Testing and Decommissioning of Wells 1 and 2 Project and Documenting Procurement Procedures.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I moved, oh, I moved to adopt Resolution Number 040-20 and authorize the Mayor Protem to execute Contract Number C074-20 with Sharon Drilling, Inc. in the amount of $98,200 for the 2021 Well Number 11 Modification and Testing and Decommissioning of Wells Number 1 and Number 2 Project.
Do we have a second?
I could.
I could.
Thank you, Councilmember Kuchardi, for a second. Discussion. And you'll be voting on our Business Item 7A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any aye. In fact, we're down to Item 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Approving an Agreement with the Court Meadows HOA Concerning Landis Court. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. At the September 15th, 2020 council meeting, work-study meeting, the city council was presented with a request from the McCormick Meadows HOA concerning the possible public dedication of Landis Court Southwest. At that meeting, the city council requested that city staff proceed with preparing the necessary instruments to accept Landis Court Southwest as a public road. Landis Court Southwest is a cul-de-sac private road in the McCormick Meadows subdivision. When Division 2 of McCormick Meadows was recorded in 2012, the city declined to accept the road because the radius of the curve exceeded the city's public work road standards. Due to an oversight, the developer removed the road from the public dedications on the final plat, but did not actually convey it to the Homeowners Association. And this resulted in Landis Court being in a limbo situation with neither the city nor McCormick Meadows HOA having ownership or maintenance rights and responsibilities for the road. The HOA has been asking the city to take over this road for several years. The road, the road curve radius cannot be corrected without buying out property occupied by an existing home. However, the city performed tests to ensure that the road's subgrade is in satisfactory condition and has indicated to the HOA that if the HOA pays for a pavement grind and overlay to bring the road to a like-new condition, the city may accept the road and take over future maintenance. The former developer, while claiming that he no longer owns the road, is willing to sign a quitclaim deed to relinquish any legal interest he may still have in it. The HOA has indicated that it wishes to clear the cloud on, clear the cloud on the title, and that if the city would take over the property, it is willing to do a special assessment to meet the city's requirements for road improvements. The South Kitsap Fire District does not object to the city taking ownership of Landis Court Southwest, and a change in ownership will make no difference, as a change in ownership will make no difference to South Kitsaps' existing emergency response access. City ownership would also allow the city to enforce the no parking requirements in the future if desired. Staff recommends that the city council approve the attached resolution as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Lawson.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the Mayor Protem to execute an agreement with the McCormick Meadows HOA for Bigley Road Partners LLC concerning Landis Court Southwest.
I have a second from Mr. Kuchardi. Discussion.
I do. I'm very much in support of doing this. I appreciate the work that the Homeowners Association and our community development department has done to put it together. The question I have is I drove out there today, and there seems to be a lot of cars that park in the cul-de-sac area. And is that going to continue, or are we going to put up no parking signs there? I'm just curious, because that seems to be part of the issue.
Right, so we are putting up no parking signs that will be enforceable on one side of the road. There are signs on one side of the road already, but because it's a private road, the city doesn't enforce that. It would have to be enforced under the fire code, but there is no provision for ticketing cars outside of our parking code for the city. So this will allow us to enforce that if there are violations, and we do have signage ordered in accordance with the MUTCD manual. And I think there are additional signs posted beyond what is there now, but it's only one side of the street that is affected.
Other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Bond, I had a question. I know it's pretty simplistic, but I know that the overlay is about half of that road, so the rest of it is in good shape and does not need any additional work, correct?
Yes, that is correct. We discussed this, and our public work standards actually allow you to require when a road is excavated that you patch the road to the center line. And so we realized that we only needed to do the half of the road from the center line over to the curb, not the entire width of the roadway to remove that existing patch, which was not up to our public work standards.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, Councilmember Kuchardi, is that your background, or is that a phone?
It's actually the phone. Janine, do you mind muting the phone caller? You, the host can mute anyone.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Lucari had a question.
I was just, I was just going to ask about muting the noise. It was getting hard to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be voting on Item 7B, Adoption of Resolution Approving an Agreement with Court Meadows HOA Concerning Landis Court Southwest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. All right, Kim is very happy, so thank you. You're more than welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting. Okay, we're to Item 7C, Adoption of Resolution Repealing, Resolution Number 022-12 and Adopting Updated Financial Policies. And I'm waiting to see if Mr. Crocker is here. There you are. You joined in. I'm sorry. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Business Item 7C is Adoption of a Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 022-12. And for the benefit of the public and the council, I just want to remind that on August 28th, 2012, the city council adopted city financial policies by resolution, providing the guidance of policy framework for the city to operate. And according to the financial best practices, the city staff have reviewed these policies to ensure they are continued to provide the city with the most current financial guidance. The city has continued to grow and evolve, and staff have identified some of the policies have become obsolete and outdated. By this resolution, city council would be updating the financial policies to reflect the most current state of our sound financial practices. These updates are proposed to reflect state of operations as well as acknowledging the current financial goals set by council. Of importance is the removal of the reference to GAAP reporting. As I say, as a few years ago, moved to cash-based reporting. And additionally, the city has separated its enterprise fund into separate account structures to provide greater transparency, uniformity, and understanding of our utilities. As enterprise funds have evolved, so has the working capital and the stabilization reserve targets for these funds, which have now been incorporated into these financial policies. Staff would recommend approving the Resolution, repealing Resolution Number 022-12 and adopting the updated financial policies as attached in Exhibit A.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I move to adopt a Resolution repealing Number 022-12 and adopting the updated and revised financial policies.
So I can do.
Councilmember Lawson, a second. Any discussion? I thought somebody from the Finance Committee would give a thumbs up. All right, thank you. We're voting on Business Item C, Adoption of Resolution Repealing, Resolution Number 022-12 and Adopting Updated Financial Policies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The motion carries. We're on to our Business Item 7D, Adoption of a Resolution Accepting the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Recommendation for 2021 Funding Allocation. I do not believe that Brandy's here, but I assume, Janine, you are filling in.
Okay. Let's see here. So each year, staff solicits applicants to apply for lodging tax funds that are used for tourism, marketing, and festival and events. The funds are used to attract tourists to the city. At the August 10th Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting, committee members and staff discussed options on how the city should proceed in the funding allocation process for 2021 due to the amount of estimated revenue coming in lower than anticipated and with a significant amount of funds for 2020 not being expended. At the August 18th city council meeting, council directed staff to move forward with the lodging tax application process for 2021, but only for tourism marketing, with the understanding that the funds will be reviewed in early 2021. After the review, the council will determine if the city will open the application process for festival and events. The total amount of funds being allocated for 2021 is $100,000. On October 26th, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee heard presentations from applicants requesting funds for 2021 tourism marketing. On October 27th, the committee met to discuss the applicants, sorry, the applications received and to provide a recommendation to the council on how funds should be awarded. During the deliberation process, the committee understood that some funds needed to be reserved for events and festivals. The funds allocated below are consistent with past allocations for tourism marketing. The committee's recommendations are as follows. For fathoms of fun, festival tourism marketing, funds requested were 3,500. The committee recommendation is 3,500. Port Orchard Base Street Association for Tourism Marketing, funds requested is 12,450. Committee recommendation is 8,000. Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce, explore Port Orchard for Tourism Marketing, funds requested is 10,000. Committee recommendation is 6,000. Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Information Visitor Center, funds requested is 14,000. Committee recommendation is 10,000. Sydney Museum and Arts Association for Tourism Marketing, requested 5,000. Committee recommendation is 5,000. And last but not least is Visit Kitsap Peninsula for Tourism Marketing, requested 24,000. Committee recommendation is 20,000. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution accepting the lodging tax recommendations for 2021 as presented.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilmember Lawson.
I move to adopt the Resolution Accepting the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's Recommendation for the 2021 Funding Allocation as presented.
Second, the second, Councilmember Chang. Discussion. I just wanted to add a note that the committee, the Lodging Tax Committee, and I think I brought this up at our last meeting, a report that would want to meet again in February to see where we were with COVID-19 and see additional funds allocations bring back to the council. So appreciate everybody's support on this. So we'll move forward with a vote on Item, Business Item 7D, Adoption of a Resolution Accepting the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's Recommendation for 2021 Funding Allocation. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, the motion passes. We're down to our last business item, Business Item E, Approval of the October 27th, 2020 Council Meeting Minutes. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the council meeting minutes as published.
And we have a second.
Second.
Your Ashley.
Second.
Second on that one. All right, all in favor of approval of October 27th, 2020 Council Member Meeting, say aye.
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 Any aye? And we have one extension, Kuchardi.
Thank you.
That's our business items for tonight. We had a discussion item, Use of Van Zee Park by a recreational sports organization. Janine, I assume you got this one?
Right. Wade Schmidt, Recreation Coaching Director of the South Kitsap Soccer Club, reached out to the city to possibly lease a portion of Van Zee Park to use as a field for soccer practices. They are needing a field that has lights. After discussion with the land use committee, staff was directed to get the length of the lease, how often they would be practicing, and how many teams would be using the field at once. Upon getting the information, the committee instructed staff to bring straight to council for their consideration. Staff reached out to Mr. Schmidt, who provided the requested additional information. If we can use Van Zee, it would be for two to three hours per night, Monday through Thursday. But the field condition and hourly cost are the two unknowns. We are a nonprofit organization that is all volunteers. We don't have deep pockets for expensive fields, and our insurance would have to inspect the field to ensure the children will not twist ankles or trip over uneven ground. We have one to two teams per night that might use the fields. If we decide the field is playable, the insurance will cover it, and we can afford it. We would likely use it November through December and possibly use it January through March. Please understand that I am not committing the soccer club to using Van Zee at this time. I'm looking at options and possibilities, and the Soccer Club Board of Directors will determine what options we will use depending on field size, condition, and cost. Staff is looking for direction on if council wishes to lease the field or park to the sports organization, and if so, what the monthly lease amount would be for.
Discussion? Yes, Councilmember.
I love the, I love the idea of having that field used for soccer teams if no damage would be done to the field. I remember when we talked about this with football players on the Givens area. It was mostly that they had to leave the field in the condition that they found it. So if that kind of agreement is in place, I would love to see teams practicing on that field.
Do we have a standard, kind of from a rate perspective, on what we've done in the past in other parks? I mean, it looks like they're just looking at options right now, so, you know, maybe our next move is to try to clarify, you know, if this is possible and what the price would be, so they could determine if they would like to even move this forward.
Yeah, something else I would just like to bring up is the fact that they're concerned about the condition of the field. And I think that we would want to have some sort of understanding among us that are we going to bring it up to their standards if it doesn't meet their standards? Or is it that it's the condition it's in right now? We did, Mark may remember, John, other people who are on the council, but we did lease that field out here a couple of years ago, didn't we? And what were the stipulations on that, Mark? Do you remember?
There were a number of, so let me answer a couple of questions. So first to answer Sean's question, yeah, I think we need to really look at rates because basically over at Givens for South Kitsap, Peewee or South Kitsap Peewee and then the Little League, it's literally like $10 a year. So, and I think when we did the South Kitsap Soccer Club, we had a similar rate structure because they had got, they had received that grant to put the lights in. And we ended up, they ended up pulling out before we finished the term of that, so we paid them $7,000 or something, so the lights are ours now. But I think they had a reduced rate because of they were getting the grant, putting in the lights. So that, I think we do need to really look at what is a viable lease rate. So some of the conditions that we imposed last time was that they had to use the popular street entrance and parking, not the tennis court side. That was one of the conditions. And they also basically had to use the field in the condition that it was in. Now, subsequent to that, we've actually brought in multiple hundred yards of topsoil, put in an irrigation system, reseeded it. So the field condition has improved greatly. But again, I wouldn't think that, I think our condition would be that we're just going to say, look, here's the field for your use, but I would be hesitant to commit to some sort of standard of field condition. It is what it is. So was that all the questions answered?
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, just a few more, I guess, comments. One, you know, as far as the Little League and Peewee and all that, granted, they only pay us a nominal fee, but they also take on the responsibility of maintaining that property for us. So we're not investing any staff time to mow the grass and water it and do whatever. The other question I would have is they're talking about using it two to three hours a night. I'm assuming that the park is available for the general public beyond that, but I'd kind of like to know what is that, what is that block of time? Is it whatever, five to eight, or just so that the community would know? And then I, basically, we need to cover the cost of the lights that they would use if they're going to use that. Obviously, they will at this time of year. And certainly, keep the field in the condition in the gym today. So any damage that they might do, they need to repair.
So for clarification, Givens Field is maintained by South Kitsap Little League. So that's, you're right, that's why that annual amount is so low because basically Bob showers, maintains everything, and he works with the Peewees to do that. The South Kitsap Soccer Club, in the past, they didn't maintain the field. So we still maintain Van Zee. So I think that there will be a difference in the rate structure based on the fact that we maintain Van Zee and not Givens. And as far as the lights, absolutely, that'll be part of the fee structure that they'll set up their hours of use. And again, I have to go, last time, it was a fall/winter usage, and I think they were like five to eight. And we have the ability to control the lights back in Nebraska. They're electronically controlled. So yes, they will need to pay for that light usage now that the lights are, the cities were before they were being operated under that grant program.
But I'm assuming that we're going to maintain that property whether these people come in and use it or not. So my issue mainly would be to make sure that if they cause any additional work. work on our part that they would cover that, but we're going to maintain, we're going to mow the grass to whatever extent we do this year for this time of year.
Yeah.
Regardless of they're there or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comment?
So we need to start with a, obviously, I'm not sure which lease agreement the clerk's office has. Probably the one we had last time is a basis, and maybe we develop a red line to to bring to a future meeting.
Right. And I believe Tony in his email had some costs for lights. So then we have the field. Is there other costs that people can, that we would need to consider? Okay.
Well, just that they're responsible for any additional costs that we may incur and that they're responsible for keeping a field in its current condition. The conditions that we put previously with using the parking lot of a popper and all that, I think those are all reasonable conditions. That's my opinion.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
And, you know, in their original proposal here, they were talking about using it November through through February. Obviously, with where we're at, I mean, November is going to be behind us. Just before we waste a lot of time and energy, maybe we could just circle back with them to see if they've still wanted to look at this as a viable option for these months. And if not, maybe we postpone kind of spending a bunch of human resources if they've already decided to go another direction.
Yeah, and go, they should go look at the field and see if it's the condition that they want to use it.
Yeah, and see if the insurance would cover it if they can check off on that before we waste a bunch of energy and this this thing doesn't come together.
Agreed.
Janine, you feel like you have enough info? Thank you. All right, council committee reports, finance.
We have a meeting scheduled later this month. We had one, but we canceled it for tonight since the budget's pretty well wrapped up. So next meeting is the 23rd at 5:00 p.m.
Economic Development.
Yeah, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 14th, 9:30 a.m.
Utilities.
Scheduled for November 17th at 5:00.
Sewer advisory.
That's the day following, November 18th at 6:30 p.m.
Land use, and do you want to fill in? Fred?
As scheduled, the next meeting is 4:30 on December 9th, which I believe is a Wednesday.
And transportation.
Will be meeting on Tuesday, the 24th at 5:00.
Lodging Tax Advisory, I would say October, but we'll be back in the meeting again in February to see where we're at. So that'll be the next meeting for us. Festivals of Chimes and Lights.
Next meeting is Monday, November 16th at 3:30 p.m.
Awesome. And any outside agency committees? Yes, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes, I will just give a little recap of the Peninsula RPTO. The last couple of weeks, we've held three legislative meetings. One for the 24th Legislative District, combination 23rd and 26th, and then one for the 35th. The highlights of our meetings, we discuss challenges for funding preservation and maintenance and how those come out of general funds and compete with a lot of other business that the city services that the cities need to provide. We talked to our legislators about the complex and competitive and unpredictable capital funding that is available to us. And we particularly stress the complexities of capital funding and the competitive nature of it. We also requested that if there happened to be any new funding mechanisms, that they be flexible, predictable and efficient to use. We also discussed the importance of protecting connecting Washington projects. We talked about recognizing the resiliency needs that we have for the lifeline routes along the Kitsap and Olympic Peninsulas. 101 is truly a life support route for the Olympic Peninsula. So are the state ferries. So is Highway 104, you know, the Hood Canal Bridge. In addition to the local issues such as Gorst or 305. We also talked and expressed the importance of the essential services that transit provides for our region and the importance of broadband in our region. We have areas within the Peninsula RPTO that do not have effective broadband service. So those were the legislative discussions for the Peninsula RPTO. KRCC's legislative reception is this Thursday. It will be a Zoom meeting. And there are two sections. One starts at 5:30, and that's a briefing for us on the AWC and the county legislative priorities for the year. And then we will meet with our legislators starting at 6:30. Those are the two reports I have.
Thank you. Any other reports from outside agencies? This is the shortest report of the mayor. Thank you very much. And Department Eds, I'm just going to go around the block. Mark, what do you have?
I don't think I have anything unless somebody has a question about something.
Going once. Janine?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Nick?
Nothing to report.
Wow. Noah?
I got something. It's actually fairly short, though. So we'll keep it short. No, no PowerPoint tonight. I just wanted feedback from council. If you recall, as a part of the affordable housing sales tax revenue, we entered into a contract with KCR to execute on that and provide affordable housing. They, we've been in contact with them. They haven't submitted for any of that funding this year due to COVID and all the federal funding that they have received. They were kind of overwhelmed with funding this year. So they need our affordable housing funding. The contract we entered into does have a one-year extension available to it. And so the mayor and I have talked, and we would like to, if council likes, offer that extension to KCR to extend the contract one year. It's a pretty seamless process from our standpoint. But the contract is up at the end of this year if we don't extend it. So kind of want to give combat feedback from council on if you'd like me to do.
I think you have thumbs up from almost everybody. So I think that's straightforward. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I know at the time that we selected them, there was a couple of other alternatives that we didn't decide to fund with this particular grant. Do we know that KCR will will need the funds next year? Or could these funds be utilized maybe by these agencies that did not receive the same level of federal funding? Just 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 making sure.
Yeah, I haven't touched base with the other entity that submitted at the time to see, you know, kind of what what their business model looks like if they've received some CARES Act funding. And I really don't know what's going to go into next year as as nobody really does with the CARES Act and what the legislature does. So I mean, our two options is let this contract expire and then go through another process in the early spring or extend this contract and continue to work with KCR under the the monies we have allocated for. And the one good thing is now we have a full year of revenue collected that we would have on hand available. And we continue to keep, collect more, but we wouldn't necessarily have to disperse the full amount of the two years. We could kind of maintain it to the one-year amount that we originally thought.
Other questions, comments? Do you feel like you have enough guidance right now?
It sounds like the council is open to and supportive of extending this contract.
Let's see, head nodding.
All right, that's all due. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
Thank you. This evening, just moments before our meeting, the proclamation relating to open public meetings and the Public Records Act was extended through December 7. If Kitsap County were to enter phase three in that window, we could go return to partial in-person meetings. But only cities that are located in counties in phase three are authorized to move to in-person meetings prior to December 7. So I'll just keep you updated.
All right, thank you. This is the second citizens' comment period as Councilmember Kuchardi mentioned. You'll have to unmute yourself if you'd like to make a comment. We also take written comments. They're welcomed and can be emailed to the city clerk at cityofportorchard.us. Do we have any, any comments?
Okay. Looks like we received one in the chat from Dave Montour. Just listening tonight. Thank you, Port Orchard City Council and Mayor Protim.
Okay. We're going to move into a executive session pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 11 zero. The city council will hold an executive session for approximately 20 minutes regarding pending and potential litigation. No action will be taken after the executive session, and this is where I get control of the meeting, I believe.
Yep. So I'll go ahead and stop the recording and then make you co-host.
Hold on one second. It's 42311 subpart, one subpart I.
Oh, I didn't have that. Some part, I think very much.
And did you say 15 minutes or 20 minutes?
20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Can we identify what staff members need to attend?
I think both you and should attend, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and stop the recording, and Jay, the meeting is coming to you.
Hope somebody helps me with that one on the way out because I have to record that we adjourned, correct?
So, yeah, so members of the public who are listening may be sign right back in and be put into the waiting room until we're done. And then once we're done with the executive session, you'll be admitted from the waiting room, and then we'll come back in and adjourn.
Okay.